All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for July 12, 2021. Please note, this is just a false start. Can we have a motion to go into executive session for the matters pertaining to the contractual negotiations and matters specific to the employment history of particular individuals?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry. Good evening and welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting, July 12, 2021. Can please stand for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. Especially the husband of Virginia D. Marino and the grandfather, grandmother of Emily Rittell. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Congratulations to Jackie Carbone, reelected trustee, and Peter Posacchia. Jackie, would you please read the oath?
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Board trustee of the Yorktown Central School District according to the best of my ability for the three-year term beginning July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2024.
Thank you. Peter Posacchia will read the oath at a later date. And now, calling for nominations of the president of the Board of Ed.
What did he say?
Superintendent's oath first.
I always do that to you every year. I'm so sorry, Dr. Hatter.
Go ahead.
Dr. Hatter will read his oath.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of the Superintendent of Schools for the Yorktown Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Sorry, Peter. Can you hear me now? I now call for nominations for the president of the board.
You got this, Peter. I'd like to nominate Jackie Carbone as the president.
Thank you. Peter Posacchia just nominated Jackie Carbone. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Congratulations, Jackie. Oh, any...
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations, Jackie.
Thank you. Okay. All right.
I'm sorry. Peter would like to say something.
Okay, go ahead. Peter wants to say something. Can we hear him?
I'd like to nominate Mike Mignani as vice president.
Jackie is going to take over the meeting at this point, and she'll call for nominations. But thank you.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Okay. Does he want to do another nomination?
You're taking it.
I have to do my oath?
Yes.
Okay. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the president of the Board of Education to the best of my ability for the 2021-22 school year.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I would like to now call for nominations for the vice president of the Board of Education.
Go ahead, Peter.
I'd like to nominate Mike Mignani for vice president for the Board of Ed.
Peter Posacchia nominated Mike Mignani to be the vice president?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Mike, you are nominated. Please take your vote of office.
Thank you.
I do solemnly...
Microphone.
There we go. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of vice president of the Board of Education for the Yorktown Central School District according to the best of my ability for the 2021-2022 school year.
Okay. Thank you. Just so everybody's aware, this is our organization meeting. There is a second meeting after this. It starts at 7:00. So I don't want people to think things are different. So I am going to ask for a... Hang on. Resolved that the Board of Education makes the following appointments for the 21-22 school year. Yvette Segal is reappointed district clerk. Alicia Sevartson is reappointed district treasurer. Joanna Duarte is reappointed district treasurer, and Steve Robyn, CPA, is reappointed as the claims auditor.
Deputy treasurer is the second one.
Sorry, deputy treasurer.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Aye.
Yvette, you need to take your oath of office.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of the District Clerk for the Board of Education for the Yorktown Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Do I have any other officers in the audience, or will they take their oaths separately?
They'll take them at a later date.
Thank you. Okay. So we have appointments. Can I have a... Resolved that the Board of Education makes the following appointments for the 21-22 school year, and it's A through X.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Designations. Resolved that the Board of Education approves the following designations for the 21-22 school year. It's A through G.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Resolved the Board of Education approves the following authorizations for the 21-20 school year. It's A through Q.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? A motion to establish May 17, 2022, at the French Hill School from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. for the annual school district election and budget vote.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? A motion to approve the supplemental defense and indemnity resolution as stated below.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. I just want to read something before we adjourn this part of the meeting. There are sign-up sheets for public comment will be in the high school lobby. This district clerk will be bringing them out. If you have any questions as to which public comment session to sign up for, our district clerk, Yvette Segal, will be there to guide you. Public comment number one is for agenda-related items only. Public comment two is for general comments. We will start our business meeting after the public comment sign-up time ends at 7:00 p.m. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, Yvette, go ahead. Thank you. Just a couple of things. I'm going to call the meeting to order a kind of a motion. Well, just welcome to Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for July 12, 2021. This is our business meeting. Just a couple of issues. One, if anybody has signs that name names of employees or students in the district, we are asking per policy that they not be displayed. Thank you. And in an effort to make sure that we started our meeting on time, the board left its executive session without completing its business. Please note that at the end of this meeting, we'll be making a motion to return to executive session to discuss contractual negotiations. That will mark the end of our public meeting. We will not be returning. We're going to start public comment. Mike, are you going to? This is a public comment number one. Mike, can you read? Agenda-related items only.
Thanks, Jackie.
No problem.
Just as a reminder, all speakers will properly identify themselves. There is a three-minute limit to each speaker. No district employee or student may be commented upon or identified by name or situation. Questions asked by the public will be referred to the appropriate staff member for reply, and questions requiring further investigation will be referred to the superintendent for consideration and later response. I will be keeping the timer, so I will give you a heads up at the 30-second mark. We ask that you wrap up your comments. We do not want people going over. We have a large crowd, and it's going to take a while to get through most of the comments. Okay?
Okay. So for our agenda-related items-only public comment, nobody has signed up to speak. So we're going to proceed with our business meeting. Okay. So we're going to go right into our superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to be with you here tonight. It's so wonderful to have a turnout at our meeting. I'm going to be sharing some information with you regarding some supplemental funds that are coming to the district and the process that we're undertaking to ensure that we maximize those funds to support our students. So in terms of the presentation for this evening, Yvette, are we on? Okay. I can't see the screen on this side of the podium. I just do want to acknowledge that we decided to move the meeting here because of the capacity that we expected would have exceeded the capacity that was available in the middle school cafeteria, and we wanted to be respectful to everyone who was attending our meeting so that everyone could participate and attend and hear what was being said here this evening. So that was the rationale behind our decision this evening to move the meeting to the high school auditorium. With regard to this evening's presentation, I just want to share... Yvette, we can go to the next slide. The Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act was passed on December 27, 2020. It was signed into law at that time. $81.88 billion was allocated for school funding, and the premise behind those monies was to help school districts across the country address the coronavirus problems and the problems that were caused for school districts by coronavirus. As you know, there were many unfunded expenditures that arose throughout the course of the year to keep your children safe in our buildings and to keep our faculty and staff safe. There were ventilation upgrades. There were barriers. There were masks. There were hand sanitizers, hand washing stations, and so many other costs that our district had to account for. And those costs were partially budgeted, but it's really difficult to capture the enormity of the situation without having lived through the situation. None of us have ever operated school districts under these types of times. So we were working through all of the budgeting aspects. With regard to our... Yvette, you can advance to the next slide. With regard to the school district's allocation, we received just under $2.8 million in what's referred to as the ESER funds and just under $450,000 in the GEAR funds, Governor's Emergency Executive... Emergency Education Relief II Fund. And there's also another source of funding that we anticipate will be approximately $800,000, but we're still awaiting guidance on the way those funds can be expended by school districts. Requirements on the grant, they're pretty straightforward, but for the most part, it's to offset the impact that COVID has had. And outside of the obvious impact that COVID has had on our schools, there have been impacts to staffing. We experienced 35 retirements this year. That is a tremendous number of retirements for a school district our size. And replacing the many talented people we lost presents a challenge for us. And that's something that our team and our school principals and our administrators are actively addressing, and we appreciate their work in addressing the staffing circumstances in our district, and we've made some good progress. We're always looking for teaching assistants and certified teaching assistants. So while I have a large audience, I'll put out a pitch to our audience. If you're interested in coming to work for the Yorktown Central School District, we would love to have you. We are, again, always looking for teaching assistance, certified teaching assistance to support, and our teaching assistants and CTAs play such an integral role in the operations of our district, and we appreciate them. So if anyone is interested in the audience and in coming to work for us, please do go onto our website. There are generally vacancies that are posted there. In addition, we want to support our students academically and their social, emotional, and mental well-being. This pandemic has taken a toll on our children. It's taken a toll on all of us, for that matter. But we're here for our children. We're here for our students, and we're here to support them. And that's the work that we'll be doing using these new funds. And I'll add a little bit more to that as we move on in the presentation. Yvette, you can advance to the next slide. This just shows how the school district plans to allocate our resources, and we're focusing really on three categories of support. It's COVID facility and safety needs, academic support, social, emotional, and mental health support. Those are the three areas that we're focusing our attention, and those have demonstrated to be the greatest need, and we have certainly the data to reflect that from this past school year. Yvette, you can advance to the next slide. So with regard to the first aspect, these are all of the different COVID-related expenditures, and I highlighted them in my opening, but they're here on the slide. And for those in the back, I apologize if you can't read the slides. We'll post this to our website. It will be part of the meeting once we post the meeting to our website. We'll certainly post this presentation for your review onto our website. With regard to the next slide, the academic support, these are the different areas. It's a combination of staff, and it's a combination of resources, both from an academic intervention service perspective as well as programmatic perspectives. Also, looking at extended day and extended school year programs. We're so pleased to be offering such a robust summer program to support our students in so many different grades across our district, and our students need this, and that's ultimately what we're here for. In terms of the next slide, this is the slide that really I'm happy we're able to do because our students need this. We're going to use these funds, in part, to fund an additional psychologist in our school district to provide that emotional support and that service, clinical support to our students. We're going to fund two social worker positions for two years in our district using these grant monies. All really, really important resources for our children. And when I say two years and one year, we're hoping that we can work through different funding mechanisms and funding sources and work through our budgeting to ensure that those positions can be retained. Hopefully, they are. Hopefully, we're able to continue to support our students in a more individualized way with additional staff on board. Our clinical team has done an extraordinary job, and I just want to give them some recognition. All of our staff have done a remarkable job. Our classroom teachers, our building principals, our certified teaching assistants, the nurses, they've all done such a remarkable job. But I also want to shout out the clinicians. They have really been presented with some challenging circumstances with our students and their families, and I commend them for the job that they've done this year, and always, but certainly for the job this year. I thank you, and I'm sure that our clinicians thank you and our staff thank you. That round of applause was very well deserved. With regard to supporting student mental health, we'd like to build capacity within all of our staff to identify a student in need. I was a math teacher, a high school math teacher when I was in the classroom, and I had students come to me and want to confide in me. I wasn't sure if I always had the resources and the capacity to meet the child where they were at that time. So we're looking at partnerships with some organizations, Putnam Northern Westchester Hospital, and actually, Westchester Medical Center Health for their support and their training. With regard to next steps, Yvette, we can advance the next slide of next steps. We have to submit a tentative plan to the State Education Department outlining what I just shared with you this evening. We have to affix dollar amounts to them. These dollar amounts do add up to what our allocations are. We have until October of '23 to expend the funds, correct? October 23 to expend the funds, but we have to submit our plan to the State Education Department this week. We're going to continue collecting feedback. We're going to continue looking at our student needs and trying to better understand how we can meet our student needs. And that's... That will always be our charge. That concludes the presentation that I have this evening on the supplemental funding that our school district has received, and that concludes my report at this time.
Thank you. We're going to go into board action items. Can I have a motion to accept the board minutes from the June 21, 2021 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Can I have a motion to approve the amendment of the 2021-22 board meeting calendar?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Can I have a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of the following policy? It is policy 6690, the audit committee.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Personnel. Be it resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent, the following resolutions be approved. We have 1 through 13.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? On recommendation of the superintendent... Hang on, this is... The following be approved. We have certified personnel appointments, part-time appointments, and temporary appointments. We have an anniversary correction, other compensation, which is summer curriculum hours. We have summer K-5 remedial reading and math program, an unpaid leave of absence, a resignation for the purpose of retirement, and another resignation under classified personnel. We have temporary positions stipend that are district-funded and additions to the substitute list.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The business office. Can I have a motion to approve the athletic announcers agreement for the 21-22 school year at a rate of $125 per game not to exceed $5,600 for the 21-22 school year?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? A motion to approve the music and arts agreement for the 21-22 instrument repairs pending receipt of insurance documents?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent, the president of the Board of Education of the Yorktown Central School District is hereby authorized to execute an agreement with RS Abrams &amp; Company LLP for external auditing services for the year ending June 30, 2022.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? A motion to extend the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Yorktown for the 21-22 school year pending receipt of required insurance documents?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? A motion to approve the agreement with Doctors Louis Cussuro and AFC Urgent Care as school physicians for the 21-22 school year pending receipt of insurance documents?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? A motion to approve the attached amendments to the following vendor agreements. These are for French Hill.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? A motion to approve the Precision Roofing General Agreement based on the EdData bid package number 30 to provide roofing repairs for the 21-22 school year?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Purchasing cooperatives. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Yorktown Central School District authorizes the school district's continuing participation in the following purchasing cooperatives for the 21-22 school year. Byboard Purchasing Cooperative, TCPN, the Cooperative Purchasing Network, included with the National IPA, Sourcewell, formerly NJPA, NCPA, which is a national cooperative purchasing alliance, TIPS USA, National IPA, and US Communities, now combined on the umbrella of OMINA Partners and Choice Partners Purchasing Cooperative.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? A motion to establish $60 per hour as the rate of pay for police officers... Police officer monitors?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Reserve fund. Whereas the Board of Education has previously established a reserve contribution... Retirement Contribution Reserve Fund and a New York State Teachers Retirement Subfund for the payment of retirement contributions pursuant to general municipal law, be it resolved that the Board hereby appropriates and makes transfers from the Employees Retirement Reserve Fund to the General Fund in the amount of $500,000 and from the New York State Teachers Retirement Subfund to the General Fund in the amount of $500,000 for the payment of the 21-22 retirement contributions.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? A motion to approve the contract with Nevco for the Yorktown High School scoreboards and installation at the cost of $78,103.20 pending receipt of required insurance documents?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? A motion to approve the budget transfers as listed below?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Be it resolved that the Board President is hereby authorized to execute a retainer agreement with the law firm Ashaw, Pearlson, May &amp; Lambert LLP for legal services during the 21-22 school year at an annual retainer fee of $85,000. A copy of said agreement shall be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? A motion to approve the following contracts for health and welfare services provided to resident pupils attending non-public schools in other districts for the 2021 school year, and this is for the city of New Rochelle.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? A motion to approve the 21-22 agreement with Gina Sorka and Jason Bucalo for videography services at a rate of $40 per hour not to exceed $10,000 for the 21-22 school year pending receipt of required insurance documents.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? We are up to curriculum and instruction. Resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby authorizes the superintendent to execute an agreement with Houghton, Miffin, and Harcourt for the Into the Math resource for grades 6 through 8 for a three-year print and a three-year digital package and related professional development for the 21-22 school year in the amount of and not to exceed $82,000 for the Yorktown Central School District.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby authorizes the superintendent to execute an agreement with Putnam Northern Westchester Bowses for the services of Michelle Stone LLN Consulting Group for balanced literacy consultive assistance in the district of a mutually agreed upon topics for 23 days plus seven hours at a rate of $250 per hour during the 21-22 school year and the amount not to exceed $46,200.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? A motion to approve the CSE Committee on Special Education Members for the 21-22 school year?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? A motion to arrange the following placements as of July 12, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? We have vendor agreements and motion to approve the attached amendments to the following vendor agreements for the 21-22 school year. Number three for Jackie Arno, number two for HTA of New York, number two for Stacy Mason, number two for Strategic Learning, and number two for Therapeutic Horizons.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? A motion to approve the contract for out-of-district placement at the Curious Joe Union Free School District for the 21-22 school year for tuition and related services per student as mandated by an IEP. The tuition rate is set by New York State Education Department.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Gifts, grants, and donations. A motion to accept with gratitude the following gifts, grants, and donations. $450.48 from the Yorktown Septa for the purchase of special education materials at Mohansick. At Brookside, $496.86 from the Yorktown Septa for sensory materials for students at the Brookside School. At the middle school, one Holton French horn from Al and Nancy Terrenti for students at Mildred E. Strang. $479.94 from the Yorktown Septa for purchase of headsets for the sensory education teachers. And at the high school, one Con Alto saxophone from Lazaro family for the Yorktown High School Music Department, one Barclay clarinet from the Venenka family for the Yorktown Musica Department, and one viola hard case and one cello soft case from Dr. Nathan and Nancy Caswell for the Yorktown High School Music Department.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Thank you very much for your donations. We are going to go on to board comments. I will start with Cheryl.
Um, well, I just wanted to say how wonderful it is to be back in person. We have not really seen each other as a whole in quite a long time, so this is great. And I also want to comment on the Coronavirus Relief Act that Dr. Hatter was speaking about. Uh, I think those are welcome monies to help us move forward and move past some of the issues and deficits that we've gone through over the past year or so. Um, and I particularly wanted to comment on the three additional clinical staff that we'll be hiring and the training for our staff. I think that's all welcome. Those are all welcome resources and will be much needed as we move forward. So I think that that's wonderful to hear. Um, and as we reunite as a whole come September, I, I think, you know, probably some, some needs are going to arise, and it's nice to hear that we'll be, um, provided those additional resources.
Thank you, Lisa.
Uh, yeah, welcome, everybody. I join in Cheryl's comments. It is so great to see everyone in person. Um, it's not our usual place, but it, the people are the same, and it's great to see everybody. Thank you for, uh, for guiding us through Dr. Hatter, all of these rough waters, to bring us to this place, um, in our, our new school year, which technically begins today.
Freshman?
It's great to be back and see everyone. Good evening to all of you here. Um, I'm actually thrilled to see that some of the relief money will be used, um, to, um, benefit our, uh, students and their social and emotional needs. And, um, you know, thankful to, uh, you, Dr. Hatter, Lisa, Tom, that we know we have prioritized that all throughout COVID. So thank you.
Uh, yeah, I'll just echo, uh, everyone else's sentiments. It is great to be back. I'm sure I'm not the only one who's glad that the 2021, 2020, 2021 school year is behind us and looking forward to, uh, the next year. And I would also like to thank uh, all of my board members for, um, I think, thank them for re-electing me as Vice President this year. Thank you.
I think I echo what Mike says, you know? Careful what you wish for. Um, but I do echo everybody's sentiments. First of all, it is absolutely wonderful to be back in person. We tried in person a couple of times during COVID, but since we couldn't have the audience with us, it wasn't the same thing. So it's wonderful to be able to see the community in front of us. So this is exciting, and I'm hoping that our whole year goes this way. So it's so exciting. I'm just happy to be back, and, um, I echo everybody, what everybody said, so I'm grateful. Uh, Ron, Tom, Lisa, is there anything you'd like to say?
Yes. So I just wanted to share some additional comments, and as, I, I concur with everything that was said, and I appreciate the acknowledgement. Uh, there's a lot that I want to say to you tonight, but I want to be respectful to the time that we have because I, I do want to hear from our community, and we're sensitive to our community and, and your perspective and what you have to share with us this evening. But there's a lot of confusion and misinformation that's being circulated, and I'd like to clarify some of that information for you this evening. In my letter dated July 2nd, I stated in no uncertain terms that the Yorktown Central School District is not teaching critical race theory. Any suggestion to the contrary is false.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask.
Can I, can we just?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask that you don't do that. We're gonna remain quiet and civil. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the chancellor of the New York State Board of Regents has noted that critical race theory is not an appropriate theory for K-12. His direct quote, Lester Young's direct quote, is "The exploration of higher education theories are confined to higher education graduate schools as well as professional schools." So there were some concerns that were raised to me about the New York State document that's being circulated. It, this was a document that was released to all school districts across New York State. And what I noted in my letter remains true. Our core values, what our task force has been working on, what our district has been working on, not just for a year, but for many years, our core values are around understanding, kindness, respect, and empathy for all individuals. Every child, every child who walks through the doors of our school should feel respected. They should feel the kindness. There should be empathy. They should feel welcomed and safe in our schools. That is our work. There are some questions that have landed in my inbox, and I just want to go over some of those to just clarify a little bit. There were questions as to whether children would be made to feel bad about themselves and who they are as a result of the, our work with the state's document. That would be contrary to our work here. We have 3,400 children who go to school here in Yorktown. We want them to be proud of who they are, appreciate who they are, respect who they are. That's our work here. Every one of our students. No student should be made to feel any lesser. We're a school district of character. We've earned that because we offer outstanding programs to our students. We have work to do. We absolutely have work to do. I also want to share a second question that has come up via email or phone calls. And please know, although my comments this evening are going to be brief, I'm always up for a phone call. I, I think anyone here who's called my office knows that you'll get a call back, and we'll have a conversation, and we'll take as long of a conversation as you'd like. With regard to one of the second, with regard to the second clarification, will the state document result in this anti-American, um, perspective in our schools? That will not be the case. We live in a great country. We live in the greatest country. That will not be the case as a result of the work in our task force. I just want to clarify that. And then there have been questions that have come to me that will the work in the state's document be an anti-police rhetoric? That's not where our focus is. That will not be the case here. We have a great relationship with law enforcement. They, they do an amazing job of keeping your children safe and our staff safe. They're available to take my call any hour of the day. And unfortunately, schools are targets for people who have bad intent. And my number one job is to keep your children safe while they're in our care. And I rely heavily on my relationship with the police to do that. We have police officers who work in our buildings. We have police officers who athletic coaches in our athletics program. We have a law enforcement club that promotes healthy and respectful relationships with law enforcement. So I just wanted to clarify that. And then finally, there was recently an allegation of an employee in our school district who was sharing their political views with students. That will, first of all, that'll never be acceptable. Our faculty and staff are aware of this, that they are not permitted to project their police. Thank you. That's.
And not, please, we're not doing that.
Not necessary. Outside of our school, we have 600 employees in our school district. I just want to share that. Outside of, um, we have 600 employees approximately. Outside of our school district, our faculty and staff are people. They're allowed to freely express their opinions outside of our school district. Please, folks.
Okay, excuse me.
I just want to continue on with my remarks, and I promise I'll, I'll conclude, but I'd just like to do so without interruption, please. Um, and, and I'm going to be very brief. I, I purposely truncated my comments at the superintendent's report to include some here. Um, our staff can express their opinions freely outside of our school district. They have every right to do that. And even our task force has 19 people who have different perspectives. And that's terrific. That's wonderful, that there are different perspectives. Our faculty and staff can absolutely do that outside of our school. Now, once inside of school, we don't. We're not permitted to project our views upon our students. That's something that's not permitted. And does it happen? Yes, it, it has happened in the past. However, once we're made aware of it, we address it. So you can bring the concern to the school administrator. You can bring your concern, um, to, to the appropriate party. Start with the teacher because there's probably context behind what happened, and the teachers are a great start. Once we're made aware, we do address it. I, I just want to close with, um, unfortunately and disappointingly, we've experienced incidents of racism in our schools. It's not okay. We've experienced discrimination in our schools, whether it's ethnicity, gender, religion, that's not okay. So we certainly acknowledge and appreciate the progress that we've made as a, as a school district, and we're pleased by that. We're encouraged by that. But we also acknowledge that we have a lot of work to do to continue to realize the values that we set forth. And our values are understanding, kindness, respect, and empathy. Madam President, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Um, we're going to start now with our second public comment. Uh, we're going to read the rules again, and then I'm going to read a brief statement. Um, so Mike, can you read the rules again?
Yes, for those who arrived after the first reading of the rules, I will read them again. All speakers will properly identify themselves. A maximum of three minutes is allowed per speaker. I will be keeping, uh, on my phone the three minutes. Uh, when I get to the 30 minute, 30-second mark, I will, uh, give you a, a warning that your time is coming to an end, and at the end of the 30, uh, three minutes, uh, please finish your sentence and let the next person speak. Uh, speakers may comment on matters of public interest involving school operations and programs, but name, may not criticize or personally name or attack any individual connected with the school district. No district employee or student may be commented upon or identified by name or situation. Questions asked by the public will be referred to the appropriate staff member for reply at the end of the, uh, public comment period, and questions requiring investigations will be referred to the superintendent for consideration and response at a later date.
As part of our annual organization meeting, we have readopted all of our board policies. Policy 1230, Public Participation at Board Meetings, clearly states that we do not allow discussion involving individual district personnel or students, and that is positive or negative. Anyone who speaks in violation of our policy will give up their right to speak. Speakers are expected to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Anyone using abusive or inflammatory language, using offensive language, or in any way causing disruption will give up their right to speak. Many people tonight have signed up to speak. Our public comment is 30 minutes long. Well, with, while each person has the opportunity to speak for up for to three minutes, keeping your comments shorter will allow for more people to have an opportunity. At the end of the 30 minutes, the board may decide if they wish to extend public comment. The other thing I'm going to ask is that we don't have the clapping and the hollering. Everybody has a, deserves to be heard by everybody, so I'm going to ask that we may remain civil in the audience as well as civil when we speak. Thank you. I will start. When you come up, please state your name and your address. We're asking, starting with Judith Stavens. If your sign identifies a particular employee or student in the district that cannot be put.
It does not.
Okay, thank you.
Um, my name is Judith Stavens. I have a quick procedural question.
Wait, I'm sorry. The microphone is not working?
Oh.
No, it's not your fault.
Hello. There we go.
There you go, okay.
I just wasn't close enough. Okay, I, I have a procedural question. Is, is personal recording allowed? It is. Okay. Alrighty. My name is Judith Stavens. I live at 2965 Hickory Street, Yorktown Heights. I've lived in Yorktown since 1995. My son graduated from this school in 2011. Many of the people in this room know me. I am proud to serve on the Steering Committee of Race Amity of Northern Westchester and Putnam, and I represent our group tonight. Our focus is on education and friendship within the one human family. I started kindergarten in 1960, long time ago. Those who know me will find it hard to believe, but I was a very shy kid. Being the only Jewish kid, December wasn't a fun month for me. I was asked to explain Hanukkah, yet was also expected to participate when we sang Christmas carols. I felt paralyzed. Would it be okay to sing? Was it wrong? I ended up feeling like I didn't fit in and I didn't belong in my school. What happened to me was uncomfortable, but was certainly a mild case of cultural insensitivity. Yet here I am, over 60 years later, and I still remember how badly I felt. While we have certainly come a long way in that intervening time, we are far from being the best we can be. It was just about a year ago that the need for DEI programming was discussed as students shared their stories at a Yorktown Board of Ed meeting. Before that meeting, I attended three very peaceful local rallies, one in Somers, one in Putnam Valley, and one right here in Yorktown. All were organized by young people from our community who reached out to their communities for understanding. They took the brave step of sharing their stories with their neighbors in public with the hopes of bringing awareness to problems that need to be addressed in our schools and in our community. Race Amity of Northern Westchester and Putnam avidly supports diversity, equity, and inclusion programming, known as DEI, in schools. We strongly believe that every child, all of them, deserves to feel comfortable and safe in school. All means all, no exceptions. In order to achieve this goal, teachers and staff require training. Processes, procedures, and programming all need to be reviewed. We believe in our country, and we believe that all of our history needs to be taught, even the uncomfortable parts, so that we can work together towards achieving the promise of e Pluribus Unum, which we all know means "out of many, one." As we make progress towards these goals, there has, somewhat predictably, been pushback. Almost all of the criticism is based on fear, not fact. These fears are stoked by misinformation about what DEI programming looks like and what its purpose is. Courteous discussion and questioning are essential to community life. However, a line is crossed when a video is posted that rails against DEI programming
10 seconds, please.
And against one highly regarded, uh, employee in particular. Um, cherished member of our community, racist tropes were used to fan the flames. Um, if anyone has any doubt, this video is Exhibit A for how desperately we need DEI. Uh, Race Amity of Northern Westchester and Putnam.
Can you please wrap it up?
Continue to work against racism and discrimination. We hope that each of you will find your own way to join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, no, if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna go to 30 minutes, we're, or everybody, we're gonna try, there's a lot of people signed up. We're gonna try to get everybody. We're gonna maintain order. Um, and Ms. Evans, I'm going to apologize to you because based on the fact that there's so many people recording this, I'm gonna change the rule, and we're not going to ask people to publicly put out their addresses. So I apologize because I made you do that. Um, Jacob Stackwitz?
All right, I guess I'm taking off my mask compared to last. Hi, my name is Jacob Stackwitz. I.
Can you speak into?
Hi, my name is Jacob Stackwitz, and I am an alumni of Mohansick and Crompon. I've changed districts afterwards. Um, my experiences, my personal experiences is that I am someone who's autistic. I'm, I have Asperger's, and I've experienced, when I was in Crompon and Mohansick, harassment and bullying. I've, I can very much emphasize with these initiatives to help educate people, both staff and students alike, about a lot of these issues that had been plaguing us internally and internalized for years now. Um, and basically that there is racism in this town like anywhere else in this nation, and that is something we need to address and improve. Uh, and as Judith mentioned, the DE, DEI initiative was first, uh, and developed thanks to stories of students experiencing bigotry, harassment, racism, prejudice, and so forth among staff and students at Yorktown. And this, and not only just in terms of experiences with students and staff, but also think about like the historical, uh, learning of like, uh, United States history. I never learned about Juneteenth. I never learned about the Tulsa Race Massacre. These are aspects, or even, uh, or even about mass incarceration, which is a huge aspect of today, right now, is still affecting us. All of this, I wish was taught in our schools during high school and middle school. Even, and at this age, people can, people at this age can very much understand these concepts. It's not something that we can't get.
Please address your comments to the board and not to the audience. Thank you.
And overall, what comes in history, the biggest fault in history is when people do not get their full experience and learn it in full, because that will just doom people to repeat those same mistakes time and time again. I want to say, though, looking at this audience, seeing how many people are coming out to support and defend this initiative, because I know a lot of people are here for that reason, as well as to defend us, close friend for many of us, to, it shows that we are trying to improve, that we are trying to learn. We are trying to better our society, our community, and that.
30 seconds.
I hope that we can continue this trend for many years in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna ask again. Let's, let's not. Um, Karen Stackwitz?
Thank you.
Wait, can we make sure that microphone goes up higher?
Can I just tilt it like this? Is that better?
Yep, thank you.
Um, um, my name is Karen Stackwitz, and I'm the mom of that guy, so I'm very proud of him. Um, I just wanted to say that, um, we need, everyone came out here to defend our school initiative to add diversity, inclusion in our curriculum. Um, this is not critical race theory, which is a legal framework, um, that's been around in academia for decades, inserts that racism is systemic and embedded in American institutions. That is a academic way of explaining some of the things that are happening in our society. What we're trying to do in our school district, and I think a lot of people are confused, is working on diversity, inclusion, having all children feel safe. Um, but over the past months, a term has been co-opted by national people and, as a buzzword, to say that this is a threat and anti-white indoctrination of American schools. Um, the call for improvements to our curriculum and hiring practices come from students, alumni, parents, who have been subject to biases and sensitivity and outright racism in our schools. The teaching of factual, diverse, inclusive American history can only prepare, promote empathy, and enlighten students for the world that we live in. It does not teach anti-racist rhetoric. And I want to say that I came from a school district very similar to this one in Paramus, New Jersey. I too was never taught all this stuff that my son spoke about. And when I learned it as adult, adult being part of Race Amity of New, of Westchester and Putnam, I was appalled of what I did not know. Do we really want our seniors coming out of high school, going into the world, and other colleges, and into the workforce, not knowing things? It's one, you know, we need to have them at least know the things, have critical thought, and then make their own conclusions. But not teaching it is not an answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Echols?
Hi, um, my name is Rachel Echols. Is this good? Is this better?
Diego, can you make it higher? Hang on, we're gonna try and make it work.
Thank you.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay. Um, hi, my name is Rachel Echols, and I graduated Yorktown High School in 2019. Yorktown. Yorktown is amazing. We are blessed to live here. However, we become the great community that we are by learning from our past. As a Jewish individual, I've grown up learning that we must learn our history so that it can never be repeated. We, as people, are too fast to act against what we think is an attack, when really, it is a reminder of how far we have come and what we still need to accomplish. We cannot be content where we are, because as great as we are, we can always become better. As parents, do you not wish for us all to find peace, more diversity? Do you not wish for us all to love each other as our friends and neighbors? I want to live in a world of harmony and diversity, where we can acknowledge our past shortcomings as a people, as well as the hurdles we still face together. Having privilege does not mean we did something evil to get it. It means we have something that others don't get the chance to have. It can be used for good, as I hope I can use my platform right now, as a white woman, to show that this is not an attack, but an opportunity to grow as a town. This is not about politics, but it's about humanity. We are all humans, but we cannot ignore history. We cannot become so divided that learning about our nation's history and misdoings in the past stops us from loving each other in the present. We are better than our nation's past shames, but we cannot be better by attacking a man for something he did not do. He has not taught critical race theory. He's only said that his life, as a black man, matters just as much as ours. Looking at all the people in my town that I love, I think any of them would agree that his life matters just as much as anyone else's.
Trish Sullivan Rothberg?
Good evening, Board. I come here tonight as a 16-year resident of the Yorktown School District with a senior who just graduated, and I want to tell the Board of Ed, Dr. Hatter, and the community that I am so grateful to the Board of Ed, to Dr. Hatter, for listening to our alumni and community one year ago and creating the DEI Committee, a group dedicated to discussing diversity, equity, and inclusion measures in our school. It's a mission to create a better understanding among students, teachers, parents, administrators, and the community around diversity and equity, which I support 100%. And I want to commend Dr. Hatter on his leadership, and the Board, and their commitment to work towards a better understanding of diversity and equity. You have all done a tremendous job given this pandemic. It was not an easy feat, so thank you. It took bravery and courage and commitment to education for the Board of Ed to listen and to be open to these conversations. A member of the Yorktown High School staff made one of the most important speeches I have ever heard in this town after the march last June. He spoke about Martin Luther King's speech and the historic Civil Rights March on Washington in 1964, and he spoke about our responsibility as Americans who care about social justice issues and racism and equity in our country. It was a positive, and it was an important speech. As many of you know, after the June march, several alumni requested a meeting with the Board of Ed, which I attended over Zoom, and I was so proud of our district for listening and responding with compassion and understanding to find new ways that are essential in our ever-changing world. These are important values to uphold in our community and for our children to witness. What happened at Lakeland's Board of Ed meeting last week was a disgrace, and I never want to see that happen here, ever. I don't know if you saw the video, but the level of hostility waged against the Lakeland Board Superintendent, it was vile, disgusting, misinformed, ill-mannered, and disturbing. Because of certain behavior of individuals, the police were called. I don't support finger-pointing, name-calling, intimidation of residents, of teachers, of counselors, of board members. I don't support vile attacks online, be it Facebook or Instagram, and I don't support referring to certain staff members as, and I quote from a horrific video, "We're coming for you," his name, Boy.
30 seconds.
This town belongs to not one person. This school belongs to not one person, but rather, it belongs to all of us. We are stewards of this district, required to make sure all children are given a fair and equal education. That's what democracy is. I thank you all for giving me time to speak tonight and for all the work you've done to secure an education for our children.
Thank you. Now, I'm gonna ask, please, stop. I'm gonna ask that we don't respond like that. We will cut the, we will not continue public comment if I can't control order in the room. Please, can you, well, before Sean Kennedy speaks, can I ask people to silence their phones? And if they have flashes, I can see them, and they're bothering us up here, so please don't use them. Sean Kennedy? Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Sean Kennedy. I am a social studies teacher here at Yorktown, and I've been teaching here for 27 years. I'm also the president of the Yorktown Congress of Teachers. And I would say I couldn't be more proud of my members that I represent and that I work with. And I also couldn't be more ashamed of the video I recently saw attacking a YCSD employee with inaccuracies, threats, and bullying. I'm not sure why exactly we're talking about critical race theory. Dr. Hatter has mentioned, he's already sent out a letter to the Yorktown community stating that we don't teach critical race theory here in Yorktown. He has cited Lester Young, a member of the New York State Board of Regents, who has stated it's not part of the K-12 curriculum. And the New York State United Teachers, our state union, has made the same statement numerous times. We don't teach critical race theory. What educators in Yorktown do believe is that our students deserve an equitable shot at success in our schools. We want our students to have an education that imparts honesty about who we are, integrity in how we treat others, and courage to do what's right to build a better nation and future for our children. Yorktown staff members are incredible professionals who preach understanding, kindness, respect, and empathy. I would ask that all members of our community do the same. For the sake of our students, we must stop playing politics with public education. Our children deserve nothing less than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Katherine Grabash?
I'm good, thank you. My name is Katherine Grabash, and I am a parent of a child in this district, and I am also an educator. At a Board of Education meeting last year, Yorktown alumni shared their stories about microaggressions, racist incidents, and more. They asked the district and the Yorktown community to support them moving forward by making these issues front and center and exploring the curriculum, diversity policies, and so forth, in order to make sure that no other students had to experience what they had. A Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee was formed last year, which was a step in making sure that we, as a district, were moving forward towards a more inclusive environment for all students. However, this work has only just begun and is now being challenged thanks to a phrase which I doubt many of the opposition truly understand, "critical race theory." By working towards healing past trauma and ensuring students move forward seeing differences, noticing others' talents and abilities, and yes, noticing skin color and cultural differences, does not translate to teaching critical race theory to our children. What needs to be dismantled is the idea that by talking about race and racism, that we are condoning and perpetuating race and racism. It is impossible to break down systems and policies that have been inherently racist without examining what those are and how they came to be. Our children deserve to be told the whole history of this wonderful country, including all of the pieces that many of us as adults never learned about. That isn't teaching critical race theory. That's discussing hard topics and allowing students to critically think about the issues of our country that continues to face today. We need our children to understand and empathize in order for them to forge a better path for all of us. By hiding behind the shield of colorblindness, kindness, and character, we sidestep the true issues and continue our performative activism. As white folks in Yorktown, we need to be understanding of how our past informs our future and make the necessary changes so that our children don't have to. If a black or brown child is old enough to experience racism, in whatever way that may happen, then our white children are old enough to learn about it. As much of the research has shown, silence about race reinforces racism. I want my white child, children, to understand that their skin offers them privilege and know what actions they can take to help undo the system that upholds that construct. I want them to know that it is okay to see color and be curious about others, and that I will tell them the truth. If we don't see each other as more than just human, but as complex and beautiful individuals in our own way, we will never be able to build that bridge toward understanding and acceptance. Those of you who do not want your children to be indoctrinated or taught CRT seem to be missing the fact that none of those things are happening or will happen in the classroom. Our children are taught to be free thinkers and to form their own opinions based on facts and relevant information
30 seconds.
through things like the New York State Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education Framework. We need to be looking through an equity lens at all aspects of the Yorktown Central School District, and the first step is acknowledging and talking about what we usually avoid, race and racism. These are not the only issues we have, but we are probably the hardest to discuss. The teachers need our support in being able to unlearn and rebuild curriculum and pedagogy. Our children need us to come to the table so that we can move forward together rather than continuing to shield them from something that they will inevitably face and need to understand.
Please finish.
I hope that the administration and the Board of Ed see the importance in diversity and equity and inclusion work that has been done and all of the pieces that still need to be put together. This work will not be easy, and it will not be quick, but every step forward means that we can
Please finish.
No, your microphone has been shut off. Your three minutes are up, thank you. No, I'm sorry, we have to respect, no, I'm sorry, we have to respect three minutes. Thank you. Christina Reichert?
Hi, hello, my name's Christina Reichelt, and my kids are just starting their Yorktown School District journey. But I'll be very brief, this is not so planned, but given some of the things that I have seen and heard recently, I felt very compelled to show up and voice my support for the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Initiatives that the Yorktown Central School District has implemented thus far and far beyond. I want my children to learn in an environment that supports all children and represents the spectrum of lived experiences. I want them to learn how to ask hard questions and face hard truths. I want them to learn facts and science and empathy. While they say it starts at home, and I will continue to do my part, I believe it must be reinforced in the arena of education and critical thinking. I could have watched from the sidelines and followed on social media and crowed from my semi-anonymous nest, but this is too important for all of our children. I have shown up, as many of us have, and I'll continue to show up, as many of us will, to support DEI in our schools. That's it.
Thank you. Linda Harris?
Good evening. I'd like to thank the Board for allowing me to speak. My name is Linda Harris, and I'm so very happy that you are supporting the, the critical, well, I'm sorry, DEI. Okay, so I have your attention. You know, it's not really critical race theory. What everybody is looking for is multicultural education, that everybody that has come to this country has loaned and gave something to this country. The exclusion of black history, you know, black history is American history. You know, they just don't say that, you know, they try to separate us, try to be separated. There's so many things that, you know, black people have given to this country, and I just had a few things written down, but one thing I would like to say is that, you know, Michael Jordan, he was a basketball, he's a basketball player retired. He didn't make it, he did not make the team the first time. He was, he was not brought on the team because he wasn't good enough to get on the team. It just made him have to practice more. So a lot of people think that you're supposed to get a trophy, you know, every time, if you're on the team. If you didn't earn a trophy, you didn't, you didn't get a trophy. But, you know, black people have fought in wars, and every war, you know, over 187,000 in the Civil War. There were, black men, black man invented so many different things, like Dr. Charles Drew. He invented the blood bank. Elijah McCoy, he invented the way to, to oil trains, steam, or trains, you know, while they were running, and it cut down on the time that trains took to get to point A to B. The first African-American man of science was Benjamin Banneker, and he was a surveyor, and they still use his journals today, his astronomical journals, journals for predicting solar eclipse. And Garrett A. Morgan, he invented the gas mask, and so many different things that we learn about. You know, I shouldn't have to learn about Catherine Johnson being the woman that helped John Glenn get into space. I shouldn't have to learn about that in a movie. So it's not just about all the things that happened to black people. It's about also the things that we gave to America that's not being taught. You know, like Thomas A. Edison, everybody knows who he is. I know, probably 10 seconds now, but that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Jean Hooper? Hopper, sorry.
Thank you, everybody, for being here this evening. I'd like to yield my time if there is a student in this district who'd like to speak, if I may allow.
No, we're just going in order.
Okay, so if anybody would like to speak, and if I could yield my time.
Thank you. We're gonna go to Mel Tasman, Tasman?
Good evening. I'm Mel Tasman, and I have lived in Yorktown for over 30 years. I have two children of color who grew up here and were educated in Yorktown. I come here tonight to address the Board and all the good people here in town, regardless of political affiliation. The idealist in me believes that this is most of our neighbors. However, I am alarmed by the rise of hate speech and those who wish to poison the minds of our residents with the virulent viruses of racism, sexism, and homophobia. There are those who wish to suppress the free exchange of ideas in our schools. They are, for some reason, fearful of a diversity, equity, and inclusion model for educating our children. While posing as patriots, they are organizing against American-stated ideals of justice, freedom, and equality. I would like to address the recent attack on one of our own, a man of decency and honesty. For those who haven't seen the video that was posted, it included one of our Yorktown parents accusing this staff member of trying to indoctrinate children with the treasonous idea that black lives matter. They called him Boy and threatened his life and livelihood. My children's experience in school bears out the need for DEI training and education in our schools. How many of you have had your child come home from school crying and shaking because he was called the N-word and threatened with physical harm? Not once, but at least three times in our schools. To add insult to injury, we had to listen to administrators and educators reject that it was systemic racism that needed to be eradicated from a school and just brushed it off as simple bullying, giving the offenders a slap on the wrist, such as a one-day-a-school suspension. My son still bears the emotional scars of such treatment 10 years after graduation. And so, Board members, I know you're gonna support your staff, and I ask all, everybody here not to remain silent, support a DEI curriculum track, and call out hatred wherever it rears its ugly head. Our schools, our town, our state, and our nation need this in these dark and critical times. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask again nicely to please stop, and the chattering in the back, I can, it's very distracting to people, so let's please be civil. George Price?
I'm George Price, but my wife is Gali Price. She will speak first, and then I will speak.
I'm a little shorter. As you said, my name is Gali Price. Thank you for letting us speak. So I tried not to cry before I came up. But the gentleman that spoke before, it breaks my heart because early May, our daughter was called the N-word on the bus. I tried speaking to the school about it. Went up the ladder the right way, and it was dealt with subpar, to say the very least. So much, though, that another child was called the N-word in the same building just a few weeks later. weeks later. This is not okay. I shouldn't have to walk around worried that my children are going to be treated differently because they are half-Black, half-white, Jewish, fully, but... Sorry. But had the heritage from so many different places. People need to understand and have the empathy towards each other. Without speaking about it, without talking about it, we're never going to change. Our daughter wanted to come tonight. We didn't let her come because we literally just came from Florida. So I'm not prepared in this speech, which I commend so many people for, but things have to change. I do appreciate that things are starting to, that we're taking the right steps forward. But it's not enough. I don't believe in critical race theory in that sense. Do I believe that things are wrong? Do I believe that we have to teach each other to learn from each other 100%? We don't understand what has happened in the past without learning from it, without understanding it, without asking the impossible, hard questions. My husband and I have spoken with the task force on the high school side. We hope to continue to speak to other ones. We've spoken to other schools. When we asked our daughter what she wanted to come out of all of this, and I agree...
30 seconds.
Sorry. When we asked our daughter, she said, "Just teach people so that this doesn't happen to the next person." So from my side, I'm begging you to please start teaching this community the truth and the right things. Thank you.
So my name is George Price. As my wife said, my daughter was called the N-word for what it meant on the bus. And you look at me, a lot of people are intimidated by me, but my daughter's 10 years old. All right? We moved here 2003, 2004. We've been here almost 20 years. I haven't had a problem with Yorktown. I think nobody won't call me the N-word straight to my face, but you never know. But educationally, the school system's great, but it needs to be diversified. You have 35 teachers retiring. Hopefully, the new ones coming in can be somewhat diversified. I would love to see my son and daughter, you know, have people that they can look up to, that look like them. All right? There are Latino, Asian, Indian, different mixes in this community. It's changed. All right? So we need to change with the times. The Board has a duty to the community. The community has a duty to the Board. And we should not let people who do not live in this community put up videos calling somebody that looks like me a "boy." I'm offended by that. I'm a grown man. He is a grown man. Now, the parent that was in that video looked very uncomfortable while this person was talking. I don't think that that person knew what they were getting into. But there are a lot of people in the audience, there are a lot of people in the community that are not going to stand up for this nonsense. All right? There are a lot of Black inventors, a lot of Black history is not taught. In Texas, they are trying to take slavery out of the textbooks. How can you teach American history and not talk about slavery? Not talk about the fight that every ethnicity has gone through coming to this country, from the Irish, Italian, African-American? I explain to people several times that I'm not a statistic person, but a lot of people came here with things, and a lot of African-Americans came here with nothing and built everything that they got. In Tulsa, Oklahoma, they built it, and it was burnt. Why? Just because they were doing well? We need to do better. You guys are leading the way. Do better. Dr. Nabaholy Ton, Dr. Hatter, great superintendents. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Higgins?
My name is Michael Higgins. I'm a parent of three. My wife and I have been Yorktown residents for eight years and are parents of an incoming student to the Yorktown School District. One of the reasons my wife and I moved to Yorktown is because of its high-performing school system and its support for diversity, equity, and inclusion. We've also been very impressed by the clarity and honesty with which Dr. Hatter communicated with stakeholders and parents over the past 18 months. So thank you very much for that. I support the teaching of diversity, equity, and inclusion. I support diversity, equity, and inclusion in the workplace. And it's important to realize, for you to realize, that all major American companies, the majority of our employers, do the same. Most of them have chief diversity, equity, and inclusion officers. We need our children to be given the tools to succeed. That means teaching and practicing inclusion. Children need to be taught about the rights and sensitivities of others irrespective of race, creed, gender, or sexual orientation. But this isn't just about what you should do so your job application isn't rejected because of bigoted social media posts, or so you don't get fired for inappropriate speech or behavior at work. Diversity, equity, and inclusion is about learning about one another and allowing our better angels to express themselves. Our children shouldn't have to inherit the biases and bigotry of earlier generations. The founders of our country spoke about the pursuit of happiness, of building a more perfect union, and of equality. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all are created equal. Our children have a right to learn about and practice diversity, equity, and inclusion so they can lead happier lives and bring our nation closer to its ideal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have exceeded our 30 minutes. What would the Board like to do? We've gone through 13 speakers. I have 44 listed. Can we extend our time?
If it were up to me, we would keep going and hear what they have to say.
Okay. So we'll go for another 15, 20 minutes, and we'll see where we are? Sure. Okay. Need a motion? Dave, do I need a motion to extend it? Can I have a motion to extend public comment for 20 minutes?
So moved.
Second. Hold those in favor. Aye. Oppose.
Thank you so much for allowing me time to speak. I'm a parent of young children in the Yorktown Central School District. I am absolutely for a DEI curriculum to be introduced and implemented or continued. Diversity, equity, inclusion. Our current curriculum tells our nation's story from one perspective. It's high time that we all learn about the perspectives that have been left out. I also think we need to give our kids some credit. They're smart, they're curious, and they have questions. Teaching them the factual history of how and when things happened in our past, which in turn led to the inequities and inequalities that still exist today, will help to answer those questions. This is not indoctrination. This is finally teaching the history that really happened. I believe the addition of DEI will be beneficial to the progress and the future of our country. When we know better, we can do better. It seems the people fighting against DEI want to believe there is only one type of American. That is a false and frightening notion. Digging in their heels to fight to conserve a history revering one type of American in order to secure an imaginary, current, and future America of only one type of American is not based in reality. Black lives matter. Women's lives matter. LGBTQ+ lives matter. Asian lives, Brown lives, Indigenous lives matter. People with disabilities matter. People who speak differently or pray differently matter. They exist, and so they matter. Our school district is a microcosm of society. How can we possibly continue to ignore the existence and the value of these students? America's strength comes from its diversity. Yorktown's strength comes from its diversity. Our differences bring us together only if we are willing to learn about each other, respect each other's stories and experiences, and celebrate who we are and who we can become together. In closing, one more point. Regardless of whether someone has a different opinion on DEI, the social media madness has to stop. Bullying in the name of patriotism is disgusting and should not be tolerated. Thank you for your time.
Elaine Griffiths?
I'm Elaine Griffiths. I'm a lifelong resident of Yorktown. I'm here to read something that my daughter wrote since she couldn't be here this evening. Hello. I'm an incoming ninth grader at Yorktown High School, and I've lived in this town my whole life. I'm very glad for this opportunity to be heard by the community in regards to this issue because it is truly something I am passionate about. As well as being a civil rights advocate, I am active in Boy Scouts of America. In fact, the reason why I can't speak in person today is because I'm at scout camp, where in addition to earning merit badges and going fishing, I will be participating in a flag ceremony every day and spending the week showing the utmost respect for our great country. In short, I consider myself a patriot, and I'd like to speak about patriotism because I believe that patriotism and a critical understanding of our nation's past can and should be coexisting ideals. Some people will have you believe that opposing this step forward in diversity education is an act of patriotism. But the truth is, there is nothing patriotic about attempting to prevent young members of this community from learning about historically marginalized members of our society. Sweeping it under the rug will only cause the underlying issues to fester and create tension. Our nation is far from perfect, I'll admit it. But the reason why we should love it isn't because it has never done any wrong, but because of something that is much more important and admirable, that it is built on the ideal that it is our job as Americans to make it better, to strive for a more perfect union. And implementing educational guidelines such as the CRS framework aren't meant to hurt the patriotism of your child, they are meant to enrich it through providing a medium through which they can grow as responsible and culturally aware citizens. As a student in this district, I look forward to hopefully seeing these changes show up in my classroom over the next few years. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Hochberg?
I can't build upon that, and I just want to say, mention something...
Wait, wait. Hang on. Diego's going to fix the microphone for you. Sorry.
And I acknowledge the wonderful Yorktown teachers. I'm a '75 graduate and the esteemed Board and supervisor tonight because you are forwarding some important work. During the horrible last four years when Facebook was filled with lots of hatred, a former classmate kept asking me, "Do you think I'm racist? Do you think I'm racist?" And the answer is, "Well, yeah." The whole entire society in America is based on a racist thing that we need to understand. It is systemic. And I just want to see this wonderful work be forwarded because there's different levels of knowledge, and the first level is not knowing. A pretty low place to be is not knowing you don't know. And it's time we start knowing and how to figure out how to understand each other and make for a better world. And climate change is real, and science is real, and systemic racism is real. Let's do something about it. Be honest. And I applaud your efforts. Let's keep it moving. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Valerie Eaton?
Let Diego fix the microphone. Thank you so much. Good evening. We want to be respectful of all the Yorktown residents. We are from P-Skill, and she comes after me, so I just want to make this as quickly as possible. Okay? First, thank you to all the administrators and educators of the Yorktown City School District for all you have done and all we expect you to do for our youth. First, let me just say, my name is Valerie Eaton, and I am the president of the P-Skill NAACP. And if you don't know what that is, feel free to Google it. The NAACP is an organization established in 1909. The reason it was organized, it's the same reason it exists today, to eliminate inequality. The establishment was developed by Black and white activists for change. Mr. Superintendent, it was wonderful, absolutely wonderful, to hear you recognize that there is room for improvement. I hope to have further discussions with you as our close neighbors, P-Skill, where our school superintendent reports to us on diversity regularly. Black and Brown children have been indoctrinated by the Board of Education with the poorly-written textbooks that lets our children be blinded from learning about their history, as many of everybody just said. We all want the same thing, and that is for our children to grow up proud and empowered to learn more about their rich history. Let's make sure all children can leave Yorktown and P-Skill outside of this area and understand the differences and why we are where we are today. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you Ariana?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Please just state your name.
Thank you. Hi. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ariana O'Koth. I'm from P-Skill. I'm a rising sophomore. I'm the vice president of both my class and of the Youth NAACP of P-Skill. There's much that I can't say that I don't already concur with. And while I'm not of this school district, I do want to offer my experience to offer further perspective. I'm 15 years old and the child of immigrants turned U.S. citizen. There is a sort of pride that one must have to abandon everything that they know, both their families succumb to a nation and start afresh. My mother gave me an opportunity, and that opportunity is not the same to other children. There's struggles that I have to go through. I have to change my vernacular daily to make sure that I am heard. I have to make sure that if I'm the only Black person in the room, I have to be respectful. I have... Well, obviously, I have to be respectful, but I have to be everything and more than my own counterpart. So going this to say, Mr. Superintendent, you said that this pandemic was tough for students. But statistically, this pandemic was unproportionately affected Black people. We saw, all of us, last June, the trepidation, the unrest, how Black people were beaten black and blue. And the reason why I joined the NAACP is because of my AP World History teacher who taught me that Africans, we were kings and queens, that our history was important, that we were vital for America. So that's why I ask you all, teachers need to tell the truth. We need to allow teachers to tell the truth. This has nothing to do with politics or critical race theories, but every day in our classrooms, we can insert culturally responsive curriculums. We can say, "Well, Alexander Graham Bell may have done this, but there was Louis Latimer." And we may talk about science and holistic property, but there was also Islamic people who thought of this first and did it, even some may say better. And while we may ignore systemic racism, it makes Black people, Black children, feel like our voices need to be suppressed. And that is a dangerous mentality. So I ask you all, as when you hire your new teachers, when you hire your administrators, please make them diverse. When you attack a Black counselor, a Black teacher, whoever he may be, we see ourselves in them. We see that maybe I can be like him, maybe I can be empowered, too. So, again, I'm very sorry if I'm not articulate. I did write stuff, but I wanted to speak from my heart. Just be mindful. You can't not see color. Color is who I am. Color is what makes people look at me and be intimidated. And to make them more comfortable... I know, I'm probably getting on time.
30 seconds.
30 seconds. Just to make students comfortable, we need to see ourselves in our teachers. We need to see ourselves that we can be empowered, too. So I also want to thank the students who are so brave and so articulate and so well-spoken. Your voices matter because we are the future generation. We are the ones who are going to be sitting in your seats, who are going to be making the laws for our children. So I thank you. And also, I do want to ask, in my school district, we have a superintendent... And also, I do want to ask, in my school district, we have a superintendent's youth advisory council. Oh, this is my quick thing. We have a superintendent's youth advisory council, so I do ask that you make a council where you, superintendent, meet with your students and make sure that you're hearing their voices clearly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Walter Masterson?
My name is Walter Masterson, and I am an American and a patriot. I've never read critical race theory, like most of my conservative friends, but you know, I did watch Tucker Carlson talk about it once. You know, the best way to end racism is to stop talking about it. We never talked about racism in the 1950s, and, I mean, how great were the 1950s? I mean, we won World War II, we invented airplanes, we went to the moon, and then we started talking about racism in the 60s, and boom, the Vietnam War. Coincidence? I think not. Just because I don't believe in critical race theory, does that make me a racist? Just because I get more angry when someone calls me a racist and I'm completely silent when there's actual racism, does that make me a racist? A lot of people say yes. I get called a racist a lot in the comments section of Instagram. Does anyone know how to disable comments for Instagram? Whatever happened to freedom of speech, you know? So, you know, I'm here to say, you know, we need to end forced indoctrination in our schools, and right after we do that, we need to, right after we end the forced indoctrination, we need to mandate that everyone stands for the Pledge of Allegiance every day.
Please address your comments.
Yes, yes.
Please address, excuse me, excuse me, please address your comments to the board, not to the audience.
Yeah, so, you know, that's, I just want to say, you know, just, you know, as a conservative, just because I don't know anything about critical race theory, it doesn't mean I can't talk about critical race theory. I mean, come on. Like, I don't know, like, whatever happened to, like, this freedom of speech thing here? It's like, you know, yeah, it's like, you know, big tech, government stuff.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your time is up. Maximilian Clark? Right, excuse me, just before we start, speakers are to address the board, not the audience. Thank you.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the comments that we just got. I feel like it's been very one-sided here, and I also appreciate the comments that we had about how the school district will not teach critical race theory, and I appreciate that. But I want to go further. People have complained about what's in the history books. I agree. I think that there's too much history in these history books. I read in just a textbook that everyone gets for the U.S. history exam that John Rutledge of South Carolina during the signing of the Declaration of Independence was like, "You can't have a revolution unless you codify slavery as part of America." And like, how does a student hear that, or hear about like, how in 1820, the South was going to succeed unless you kept slavery around, or 1850, they were going to succeed unless you kept slavery around, and then something, something, 1860s, and then, you know, like, Chinese Exclusion Act, I mean, like, you know, Japanese internment camps, Trail of Tears, I mean, like, the stuff that's in the book right now, even without an editorializing, like, teacher to tell us that America is bad, how are students supposed to read this stuff and not think that we have a race problem in this country? We need to go back to teaching the basics. George Washington, but not the slavery part, World War II, but not the Japanese internment camps, or the fact that they get American Nazi piety, and the "I have a dream" speech. We should teach MLK, but just that part, not the part where the FBI ruins his life. Listen, do I want, like, history curriculum being built by a bunch of PhDs? PhDs are famously liberal. We need equity in our voices. If the uninformed conservative voices of this country cannot use hate speech and fear-mongering to affect school curriculums, then why am I paying $15 a month to Trump's reelection So fairness in our viewpoints, teach people to love America, not hate America, by not teaching them about America. Thank you.
I'm having a hard time with your last name. Is it Wienerman or Neiman?
Nierman.
Nierman, I'm sorry. It's-
I think that's good. Can you hear me? I think so, yeah. My name is Dorothy Nierman, and I'd like to thank all of you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. We have three children who were educated in the Yorktown schools, and we are grateful for the excellent experiences that they had in this district. If any of their math, science, or English teachers had failed to include essential steps over time in labs or geometry theorems or characters in a classic novel, I'm sure parents would have immediately addressed the issue with the teacher administration. Over the years, more and more of us have acknowledged that crucial information and facts have been omitted from our history books and lessons, and because of this, many people have suffered. Going forward, this needs to change. Our schools need to include all of the facts and events from our country's pasts and all of the contributions of all people in their teaching materials and provide additional education and training for staff. It may be uncomfortable at times, but it is important that our history be honest and complete. Unfortunately, many people, including myself, were, are unaware of, or didn't think about a variety of injustices that many suffered because of skin color, ethnicity, religion, or place of birth. Black soldiers returning from World War II not receiving equal benefits from the GI Bill, poor medical care in certain communities, difficulty obtaining mortgages, redlining in the real estate world, to name just a few of the inequities that affected generations of people of color and different ethnicities or religions. There were and still are atrocities of violence, shootings in churches and synagogues, hate crimes, killings of innocent children and teenagers. Sadly, the list is extensive. Happily, there have been many improvements and opportunities for our children, excuse me, in this country since 1965, but there is still a lot of room for improvement for all to feel included and respected. No one wants to make anyone feel guilty. No one wants to accuse anyone of racism. No one wants to go against a parent's teachings or values. No one wants to accuse anyone of being too far to the left or too far to the right. But hopefully, everyone wants-
30 seconds.
Hopefully, everyone wants our history books to be accurate with facts and events of the past that include everyone's experiences. All can agree that respecting each other's experiences and differences improve the life of a community. Living in a diverse community on a daily basis in schools, neighborhoods, workplaces, and places of worship enables us to realize how similar we are. All human beings with the same goals for our children, the same family joys and concerns, worries, and struggles.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was 20 minutes. We've got up to 21. What would you guys like to do?
Let's keep going.
Another 20 minutes?
Yeah, let's continue.
Yeah, I think we should continue.
Okay, motion to continue public comment for another 20 minutes?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Francine DiBernardo?
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Frandi Bernardo. I have been a Yorktown resident for over 34 years, and both of my children attended Yorktown Central Schools for their education. I would like to thank you for supporting diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives in our school. I believe DEI will benefit our students in several ways. I have worked for technology corporations for over 40 years. Many of the large multinational corporations began requiring employees to take diversity and inclusion education more than 25 years ago, so we're just catching up here. Corporations invest millions of dollars in this education because it increases employee productivity, innovation, job satisfaction, and retention. In other words, it's good for their business. DEI education will help prepare our children for successful careers in any vocation or field they desire. So in other words, it's good for them to get jobs. Second, DEI will provide a learning opportunity for critical thinking, which is an essential skill. Third, by telling students the whole truth about the history of the USA and the rest of the world, I believe it will make their education more engaging and interesting for them. Last but not least, DEI will give students an opportunity to develop empathy for others in areas and situations they may never be exposed to outside of their education. It can help to reduce bullying and create a more enjoyable educational experience for all students. DEI develops critical life skills. I want to thank the brave people who have worked to shape this initiative, especially counselors, teachers, staff, the superintendent, and the school board. Thank you.
Cheryl Goldberg?
I'm a retired New Yorktown Central School District teacher. I was dismayed at best, horrified at least, to see the vitriol that parents felt comfortable hurling at staff in the Yorktown Central School District. The most apparent complaint that a staff member, a Black Lives Matter supporter, is somehow threatening their values by indoctrination of students is unfounded. When Black Lives Matter became an organized movement several years ago, I admittedly was offended. I didn't understand why all lives didn't matter. My understanding of this movement has evolved. I soon learned that this movement was vital to address the disproportionate violence that has been historically inflicted on Black and other minority and marginalized groups. Had it not been for the unmasking of data and historical records made possible by the Organization of Black Lives Matter, I would not have been able to grasp the extent of the inequities in treatment that Black and other marginalized communities have endured. I now understand that our country's founding fathers, in writing that all men are created equal, gave us a goal that we have not yet reached. It is a more perfect union that we aspire to and must work hard to achieve. History is written by the winners who exert their power and influence on others. They work hard to maintain control. Black Lives Matter, which advocates for equality of treatment and opportunity for all marginalized groups based on race, gender, sexuality, disability, and I'm sure others that I've not mentioned, has given voice to those groups. It has revealed that our nation's history has not been accurately portrayed. The contributions of many groups are ignored and/or suppressed and opportunities unequally available. Providing recognition and opportunity to all groups does not diminish any group, it elevates us all. A public school education like the one available at the Yorktown Central Schools exposes students to a variety of ideas, opinions, and interpretations. As educators, we value a diversity of ideas and encourage students to be critical thinkers and empathic citizens. When new information comes to light, it is incumbent upon educators to discuss it with their students, even if the topic is uncomfortable.
30 seconds.
Galileo Galilei caused the church such discomfort when he espoused the fact that the Earth revolved around the sun, that he was excommunicated, or in today's terms, canceled, for over 300 years. Our country is over 300 years old. I hope that we could do better than that.
Ella Chi?
Hi, my name is Ella, and I'm going to be a senior at YHS. One of my favorite classes this past year was AP US History, and that's really saying something because I'm more of a math and science person. One of the things that I really admired about our AP US History teacher was that he didn't only prepare us for the AP exam, but he also really taught us to understand American history. He taught us to understand how we got where we are now, what we did right and what we did wrong. We learned about every admirable, every awful, and every average act that was passed, and part of learning about our history is examining it from every perspective, the good, the bad, and everything in between. And I feel like we're made better when we don't just challenge our own assumptions, but when we have our assumptions challenged by others, like our teachers and our classmates. And that's something that I want for my younger sister, oops, and future students to experience and enjoy as I did. Thanks for your time and your attention.
Ariana Kamaj?
Hello, my name is Ariana Kamaj, and I'm an incoming senior at YHS. And forgive me preemptively if this speech is a little rough, my original one would not have been allowed to be spoken tonight. As a student of the school, I feel a need to come out and say something. We are not being taught CRT. We are being taught how to think for ourselves because we are all people who deserve the most, and the most is the truth. We are a country built on the slaughter and the exploitation of minorities when, according to our Constitution, no state shall deny any person the equal protection of the law. And equal protection means education. It means open discussions. It means listening to those who have something to say about the hate and bigotry they face in their daily lives. It means educating our teachers about the truth of our nation and what it is like to be a minority, and that truth will transfer to our students and our future generations. We need to rethink our education system. The commitment our school has made to equity should not be skin-deep. It is an issue every human in this country faces, and it is an issue that Yorktown must listen to. We must take actual action here. This is what democracy is. It is not attacking a Black man, a human, who is part of our faculty and our community online for expressing facts and attempting to dox him in front of the world. By the way, this is the man who has done far more for our community than most of the people here can say that they have ever dreamed or thought of. Yorktown is better than this. We should be better than this. As a student of this school district, frankly, I expect more. I expect equality. I expect believing others' trauma and history. I expect to be taught the truth from my teachers. I'm a first-generation American. My parents gave up every single thing they had in their life to give me a chance at an education they never had, and that education needs to be worth it. I, and we all deserve to be told the entire history of our country, the truth, no matter how uncomfortable it makes some middle-aged white women on Facebook. And that's coming, and that's coming from a white girl. We all deserve better because skin color does not determine worth. This is my school, my town, and I will not let the school erase and ignore the truth of our history. Thank you.
The Whalen family? Collectively, you have three minutes.
I just wanted to quickly say that I have, oh, good evening, Board of Education and administrators. My name is David Whalen, and I have faith and confidence in the Board of Ed, the administrators, the teachers, and all of the counselors, social workers, and CSCE staff, all of the staff throughout my experience with the district. I have faith that you will treat all our children with respect. Thank you.
I'm Megan Whalen, and I have three children in the Yorktown Central School District, and I just wanted to speak about my daughter's experience, her first year in the high school during COVID. She was a full-remote student and scared, and our family was new to the high school, and a person in this school, the Yorktown Guidance Department, and Julia's counselor in particular, made our year wonderful. That person took care of her, made us feel welcome, helped her find her place in the school. She was a little insecure about where to go, what clubs to join, how her academics were going to go, and the Yorktown Guidance Department was- were going to go, and the York Town Guidance Department was wonderfully helpful to us. I registered Julia for the wrong Regents exam, and that person helped me get out of that. They were just, the York Town Guidance Department was wonderful, and we just couldn't have asked for a better experience for Julia, my daughter. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Julia Whalen, and I'm a rising sophomore at York Town High School. I would like to share some of the thoughts my friends and I had about the Guidance Department at our school. These are some direct quotes from my friends. First, the YHS Guidance Counselors are literally so good. They worked with me to try to help me pass my classes during COVID, and now they're helping me so I can take AP Bio next year. Second, once when I was panicking about missing study hall because I couldn't find it, a Guidance Counselor was super helpful. Third, a YHS Guidance Counselor talked to my Husker Discovery class about a club, and they were super nice and patient with us, even though my class was full of people who didn't really understand. And here is my quote: "During my freshman year, I was a fully-remote student who hadn't been in the high school and had no one to guide me. The YHS Guidance Counselors helped me feel welcome, accepted, and like I belonged during my first year, and were patient and tolerant through any mistakes I made. I ended up having a great year, all thanks to their continuing support." Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Kingsbury?
Hi, I'm a resident of the York Town Central School District. I've lived here for over 20 years, and one of the reasons I moved here is the great reputation that our schools have for giving our kids a great education. So, thank you for all the work you guys do to make that happen. Others have spoken already quite a bit about the need for DEI and the ability of our kids to be curious and to handle even the difficult truths, and I really can't add anything to everything they've said so well. But those who know me know I always try to understand the other side. So, I did a little research, or rather, I drafted my college son to do a little research, and he looked on the Internet, and he found a site called CitizensUnitedAmerica.com, which has something called an A-to-Z Guide on how to combat critical race theory. And on that guide is a, quote, "model school board language to prohibit critical race theory." And we read through that together. It was quite a long document with a whole bunch of legalese as to what would and would not be allowed in a school that passed such language. And at the end of it, there was a list of some, I would call them red flag words. They were words that we were either forbidden to be used or that at least should raise a red flag, and one should be very cautious about how to use them in educating children, according to this site. And those words obviously included the phrase "critical race theory." They also included diversity and equity and inclusion. They also included phrases like culturally responsive teaching, racial justice, and even racial prejudice. I don't know how we can talk about US history without discussing the word, the phrase "racial prejudice." And they included other words like "social-emotional learning." Now, my very same son needed a lot of help with social-emotional learning when he was little. He turned out great, but it bothers me that we could be censoring all these things or raising them as red flags, that if a teacher dared mention these things, or if an education, a training program for teachers dared mention these things, that there would have to be an investigation, you know? Censoring teachers doesn't work. Micromanaging classrooms doesn't work. Let's allow teachers to do their job. Let's allow them to tell the truth about our history. We have good teachers here. We have good administrators here. We can trust them. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Stanford?
Hi, my name's Maria Stanford, and I grew up here in York Town, and I have some kids in the district. But tonight, I'm going to read a statement by Rachel Freddie. She's the co-founder of York Town for Justice. She also has three kids in the district, but she couldn't make it tonight. "We are in such a contentious time, I think it's important to remember why we are really here and how York Town is part of a larger cultural story. A year ago, America began to reckon with its difficult history with racism. This conversation is long overdue in our society. Racism is a much more pervasive and insidious problem than simply having equal rights and people being personally kind or mean to one another. Racism is embedded in all of our systems, still under the law, education, medicine, and housing, for instance, and is often invisible to those who do not bear the brunt of its inequities. Critical race theory explores this concept of how racism is perpetuated in the legal systems. CRT is taught at the collegiate, mostly post-collegiate level, as it's very complex and nuanced and not developmentally appropriate for most K-12 students. We aren't realistically discussing CRT in the York Town Central School District. What your community members are requesting and advocating for are DEI and CRS measures, celebrating diversity, inviting inclusion, supporting equity, and becoming culturally competent, responsive, and sensitive. There's no secret agenda, no guilt trip, no overemphasis on our differences to the detriment of our commonalities, just a deep desire for all students in our district to feel safe, welcomed, supported, and represented. This isn't about a cultural war between community members and parents. This is and always has been student-focused. Last year, July 27, 2020, a group of York Town Central School District students and alumni spoke to the board about their experiences. Part of their YCSD experience had been discrimination, bigotry, racism, sexism, and homophobia. Often, this was between students, and staff was made aware, but to no avail. Other times, this was proliferated by the staff. These students and alumni petitioned the district for DEI measures. I'm sure there are countless students who graduated from York Town Central School District and did not experience these prejudices personally, but one person's good experiences do not discount another's. We promise justice and liberty for all, and all means all. DI measures are good for all students. We know this from research. We know this as educators. We know this as parents. They make students better critical thinkers, more knowledgeable about cultural nuances, and more adept at handling complex information. So many of us moved to York Town for the amazing school district.
Thirty seconds.
I fully support this school district's vision to support this work. I trust that they will make educationally sound decisions, and I trust that these changes are in the best interest of our students. Thank you very much.
Rosemary Boral?
I grew up in York Town. My--
One second. Diego, can you fix the microphone?
Sorry. I came to York Town when I was three. I grew up here. I have been here well over 50 years. My children were raised here and went to the York Town Schools, me and my five brothers and sisters, including me, six, we came through the York Town Schools. When I first moved here, my father had been an immigrant from Czechoslovakia. He had escaped communism. And one of the reasons I'm here tonight is because I did see that video where this curriculum was accused of being communist. I know a lot about communism from all the things that my father shared. We talked about it around the table growing up. We were concerned and always were told about looking out for flags for political situations that could make that enter. I can't imagine that anybody would equate social justice with communism. It's just insane to me. I'm grateful that this curriculum is being introduced. I am a teacher, now retired. I retired from teaching, and I am now working in the mental health counseling. And I'm sorry, I just, I didn't prepare anything, but I just was so upset that I just felt like I had to come and say something. Please encourage this. I am a lifelong teacher, and I am learning things about this crisis among our fellow Americans, that how many people died for life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness? How many people in wars died for that, to lift up people and bring about equality and bring about justice? We're so un-American if we can't teach the truth. That's all.
That got us to 30. Send again? There's 14 more?
14 more people. I think we should finish.
Yeah, let's continue.
Can I just, David, do I have to give a time, or can I just say we're going to go for the last of the public comment? All right, so we're going to finish off for the 14 people who are on the list to speak. Time of motion?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Michelle Gilbert?
I would like to first thank the Board for the open forum, for the community to speak out on everything that has an impact on our students in this district. I'll do my best to stick to the community guidelines that you've put forth. My name is Michelle Gilbert. I am a current York Town resident and a product of the York Town Central School District. I've also watched my four younger siblings go through the district, and I'm now watching my friends' children go through the district, and I hope to possibly one day also send my own children to York Town schools. My family and I have been active members in this community in a lot of different ways since moving here from Queens 28 years ago. One of my favorite things about this community has always been its devotion to the children who are being raised here. Alliance for Safe Kids, or ASK, which was started when I was a student, has grown within our community and continuously works to fill the needs of our kids. My family and I have worked with Alliance for Safe Kids in different capacities since its founding, and I'm thrilled to see its legacy continue with the involvement in the Central School District's Cultural Awareness and Equity Task Force. The task force that was formed last year is a perfect example of this town, its organizations, and its district making strides to do better for York Town's children. As our nation becomes more divisive, it is important to give York Town's children a safe haven to learn and grow without bias or bigotry. Diversity, equity, and inclusion are meant to show all of York Town's children that who they are matters, that their history is important, and that their future has no limits. I'm here today to ask that this Board, our teachers, and our counselors continue to pass that message on to the kids in our district. Thank you.
Holly Davis?
Good evening, members of the Board and Superintendent Dr. Hatter. My name is Holly, and I'm here tonight as a concerned parent advocating for my children in our community. The Board of Ed and Superintendent have constantly not been transparent regarding what is happening in our schools with our children. My question is, what is the policy that York Town District has between social media and educators and staff? No answer. I didn't think I would get an answer. To begin with, back on June 7, 2020, we had a march in our community at the DeVito Field. A school guidance counselor delivered a divisive speech. I would like to put on record the ending of his speech where he spills hatred into the community, as I quote, "It's not my job anymore. The job is for white people. What are you going to usher in for the new year and millennium? Are you going to usher in bigotry, racism, Donald Trump, or unity, love, and oneness? Are you going to let people keep talking madness, or are you going to correct them? These statements are biased and racist. This is what our tax dollars are paying for." On June 16, I quote, "White people, what are you going to do? Are you going to use your privilege to do something good? I hope you will." This is unacceptable and extremely questionable behavior coming from someone who works as a school guidance counselor and is very influential to our children. I am not going to have a debate with either side. This is unacceptable for an educator to publicly state his own bias, his influence on the community will transfer back to the schools. Next, let's talk about the petition that was created on change.org. Most members of our community were unaware of this petition and what it entailed. Moving forward, because of the York Town for Justice petition of demands that allegedly stem from racism within our schools and community, is it safe to say an equity task force was created under the radar without parental consent or involvement? Two things: racism exists all over the world, in many forms, degrees, and has always will be. Unfortunately, racism can never be 100% eradicated. The Board of Ed works for us. We entrust our children to you, and it is unacceptable how our children are being treated. There's no excuse for a child or parent to feel intimidated or bullied. I am here today to tell you that this is your rude awakening. Parents are no longer going to tolerate it. You know, what I do know for a fact exists here in our schools is bullying. I've talked to many parents that have chosen to either homeschool, send their children to private, or move out of the community. It is quite alarming that when talking with many parents, they have expressed that they are constantly worried about what they can say or do when it comes to their children and situations that arise because in fear of retaliation--
Thirty seconds.
--their children will encounter. Imagine if your child was taught to feel guilty and ashamed of the color of their skin. CRT, or whatever you want to call it, is a Marxist ideology that says if you are born white, you are oppressor, and if you are born black, you are born oppressed. This ideology is complete opposite of what Martin Luther King fought for, which was don't judge a person by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. This is a culturally responsive sustaining education framework that is being implemented within the public school systems in New York.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask that the audience remain silent and be civil. Thank you.
My name is Carmella. I live in York Town. Teaching CRT is unconstitutional. So, I am happy you're not putting on the record that it is not being taught, but I don't know if I believe that. It has already been banned from teaching in many states across the US. It does not have anything to do with academics and will only take away from our children's valuable, authentic learning time. This will only promote hate and create division amongst their peers. These ideologies are not to be taught in schools, but rather a parent's responsibility. Schools are to teach children how to think, not what to think. Every single student is supposed to feel individually exceptional, be able to focus on academics, and not a curriculum based on making race its focal point. Children are in school to excel academically, artistically, and athletically, to the best of their abilities. The role of schools in this country is to lift as many boundaries as possible for every individual student, not throw imaginary boundaries in front of them that might highlight or focus on their differences and force them to internalize guilt or make them feel that they are a victim. The idea of these obstacles or privileges that others have decided can be determined by their skin color or ethnic background is absolutely absurd. That is abusive. We need accountability and respect for one another. We should not be focused on race when teaching academics. As quoted from Elvira King, MLK's niece, "We are all equal, and we are all human beings." If this is going to be implanted in our schools, parents are going to fight to have our tax dollars follow our children. That was Holly's speech. Mine is something else. How do you think white children feel when they are called privileged, when their parents are police officers, when they are from Republican families? You think they aren't made to feel low? You're right. All of this has to stop. Racism exists in society, but not to the degree that you are portraying it to be. Unfortunately, we will never eradicate racism 100% due to cultural, family norms, and beliefs. It is ingrained in society. But that being said, we cannot force our children to believe they are white, privileged, or racist. We cannot have our schools implement programs to our children that go against their family cultural norms and beliefs.
Thirty seconds.
It is not the school's job to do so. As our children get older and experience life, they will be able to make their own decisions and their beliefs. We cannot force and indoctrinate our children to accept belief of others, but we can't expect one to respect all others' beliefs. As long-- As long as we respect others, we judge others on their content of their character and not the color of their skin. Then we can understand what Martin Luther King has said. We cannot confuse and groom our children with radical, non-conforming, non-cultural family belief systems. This is the breaking of dynamic family
Lisa Mujo? Can I just ask, when speakers are coming up, I'm going to ask that they state their first and last names. That was the rules. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lisa Mujo. I've been a Yorktown resident for the past fifteen years, and both my boys are going through the Yorktown School District as we speak. My oldest son is going to be entering high school in September. My little one is going to be in fifth grade. I am a teacher in another school district, and I have a master's in multicultural education. The very first thing I learned in my master's education class was from Margaret Mead, who was a cultural anthropologist. And my teacher said, "Your job is to teach students how to think, not what to think. You are to present them with facts, good, bad, ugly, indifferent, it doesn't matter." I could tell you right now that my students have no idea what my political standings are, what my religion is.
No. I'm going to ask the audience to remain civil and quiet. Thank you.
It is not appropriate for my students to know my beliefs. I am there to present facts. I'm a science teacher. I present all kinds of information to my students regardless of the race of the person that created or came up with the invention. I give them the facts. That is my job as an educator. It is not to change what they think. It is not to go against what their parents have taught them. Even when I teach evolution, I say, "Hey, guys, this is on the regents. You have to learn it for this. You do not need to believe it." That is my job. As far as everything else that's going on in the community, I can only say that my boys have experienced nothing but kindness from all of their teachers. They are also part of Scouts BSA, not Boy Scouts anymore, Scouts BSA, and they are very happy to incorporate and include the girls in that troop. I just want to say that what's happening tonight with people ridiculing the other side is disgusting, and you'll notice that the conservative people here did not make fun of the liberals. Thank you.
The next speaker's name is hard to read. It may be Mel. They live on Winslow. We're just going to go on to the next person. Kimberly Brennan? Joseph Prisco?
Hello. Thank you for giving me time. I am a Yorktown resident, born and raised, product of your school system. I'm currently a teacher in New York City. I have recently moved back to Yorktown about a month and a half ago to raise a family. And yeah, so I wanted to read something from a doctor. Her name is Goldie Mohammed, and she wrote a book called Cultivating Genius. If you haven't read it, I recommend reading it. It's something that might change your mind on everything and provide some facts. Dr. Goldie Mohammed speaks about the importance of criticality and enabling students to question both the world and texts within it to better understand the truth in history, power, and equity. She goes on to better explain criticality by framing it as the capacity to read, write, and think in ways of understanding power, privilege, social justice, and oppression for populations who have been historically marginalized. When youth are allowed to think and learn with criticality, they're able to see, name, and interrogate the world, not only to make sense of injustice, but also to work toward social transformation. In addition, students need spaces to name and critique injustice and ultimately have the capacity to build a better world for all. Criticality helps students to tell the difference between facts and truths. This is my favorite. Oftentimes, facts do not capture the full narrative of people, but are taught in schools as histories of people of color. Truths, in turn, are the realities and lived experiences of person experiencing the moment which equally contribute to the same narrative. And that was written by Dr. Brown. Advancing criticality pushes students to cultivate the tools to dismantle deficit ways of the world and to protect themselves against wrongdoing. They learn the historical, institutional, and structural elements that shape the world and that explain why forms of oppression exist, because they do. One fallacy is that criticality is only for people of color or others who have been oppressed across the world. This is not true. Black and brown people have historically been oppressed across many lands, and they did not create situations that caused them to be oppressed. This is similar to thinking that culturally and historically responsive education is only for African-American or Latinx students. This is a false and limited way of viewing education, similar to suggesting
Thirty seconds.
I'm almost done, sorry. Suggesting that greatness is only reserved for African or Latinx students. The people who need criticality the most become those who share identities with the oppressors. Teaching criticality helps students assume responsibility for the ways in which they process information to avoid being passive consumers of knowledge and information. Criticality helps students read the world with a critical eye, refusing to accept unexamined information as factual or true. Thank you.
James Kation?
Good evening. My name is James Kation. I've lived in town for about twenty years now, and the proud father of five Yorktown graduates and one who's currently still working on it. And I want to just thank the Board of Education for its commitment to confront racism, bigotry, hatred, and the lesser-known ill of ignorance in our schools. And I'm gratified to hear from Dr. Hatter, a wonderful leader of our school district, the acknowledgement that racism does indeed exist, because a journey begins with acknowledging that we do have a problem. And like other communities, we have a problem here in Yorktown. And there's the pernicious nature of racism and hatred, just such that if we take our eye off the ball, if we're not cognizant of working hard to eradicate it diligently, then it only serves to further disenfranchise, alienate, and impede the success of all students. And I had a lot more to say tonight, but I think I've heard a lot from this room, and I'm very proud to be here with our community members tonight. But I want to just end with this. The goal for our education should be, for educating our children should be simple, that we should engage and educate our students so they can go forth with competence and agency into the world, much like we heard from a number of young people today, Jacob and Rachel. Our two Arianas, a sophomore and a senior, Julia, thank you very much. I'm very inspired by your words tonight. But as George Price and his lovely wife mentioned earlier, if we can't, if our kids can't identify with the learning that's happening in the classrooms, if they don't hear their voices in their literature that they're reading, if they don't hear and see their stories being told in the history that's being taught, if they can't share their perspectives in the classroom, then I think we'll be failing in our most important endeavor at all, and that is to set forth students who will be confident and filled with agency so that they can make good decisions in this world. After all, that's what we're looking for as parents in this community. You take wonderful care of our students, and I greatly appreciate your work. Don't take your finger, don't, you know, don't take your eye off the ball. Keep working hard. We're behind you. I think this room is behind you. I know this community is behind you. I'm behind you, and I thank you very much. I'd also like to call out Mr. Kennedy. I was very inspired by his words, and Diego, thank you for elevating all of our voices tonight.
Devin Brown?
Hi, I'm Devin Brown. Briefly, I'd just like to say that when this board is faced with condemnations of what's being referred to as critical race theory from people who have never read nor could identify an author of critical race theory, nor likely would be able to articulate what critical race theory is as an ideology, it's not the responsibility of this board to kowtow to people who argue from ignorance in advocacy of codifying ignorance. Briefly, I'd like to suggest that this board, that your duty is precisely to prevent that from happening. I support DEI initiatives, and I hope, if given the opportunity to do so, that this board will consider protecting the teaching of critical race theory in this district. I'd like to express agreement with a woman I heard earlier, Carmella, I believe her name was, who said that the responsibility of our educators is to teach us how to think, not what to think.
We're not going to name names, please.
I'm sorry. Well, this sentiment, I think we can all agree, is more or less true enough of our educational system and how we conceive of it. But the problem is, this culture has not taught us or our children how to think about race, and it will not do so by banning the exploration of texts or theories. That's all. Thank you.
Richard Gianniska?
Hello. My name is Richard Gianniska. I'm a 2018 Yorktown graduate. Please, sorry. Some of you might be surprised to see a college/university student return back to speak at a school board meeting because even with no family members in the system. I'm here to regard CRT, or as some people on the board would like to put it, DEI. I want to make a point why it should not be in our school/community. CRT/DEI is not being used to create equality, nor is it to bring us together and unite as brothers and sisters. It is actually doing the complete opposite. DEI/CRT is teaching young kids to look at people based off their skin. We are teaching our kids to look at people differently. I'm not saying you can't be proud of who you are and where your roots come from, but it's not the school's job to teach our students to look at people differently because of their skin. Morgan Freeman said it best when asked about Black History Month. He said, "The best way to stop racism is to stop talking about it." And he's right. This is the way to look at it. I believe that no one is born evil, nor is anyone born a racist. Young kids are the most innocent beings on the planet. The moment we start to teach them evil thoughts, they start to lose their innocence. Here's some history. We can look at the story of Adam and Eve. As they lived in the Garden of Eden, life was simple and it was sinless. But as soon as they took a bite from the apple from the tree of knowledge, their innocence was lost, and they became sinful. Instead of teaching our kids about the negatives, we should be teaching them in a positive way to help them, make them better people as they grow up. We need to teach them how to look at character, teach them what it's like to be good people, how to value all lives. It's about teaching what's on the inside, not the outside. I do have a personal experience from when I was in school. I remember when I was in eighth grade health class, we would learn about stereotypes. This is a negative way of teaching, because kids may take this the wrong way. Let's say a kid walks into a class and sees a stereotype happen. They're going to start to believe that for the rest of their lives. DEI/CRT is trying to demonize the white race and create a stereotype that all white people are racist, and that all minorities are incapable of succeeding, when that is not true. There are many successful black people in the world, and Asians, and all the races. Luckily for me, my parents raised me to respect all people and looked to, please excuse me. Luckily for me, my parents raised me to respect all people and look to them to see who they really are, not at them based off their skin color. I'm a firm believer that there is nothing wrong with improving our schools and the way of teaching, but adding DEI/CRT will only teach, will set teaching backwards. Don't take the innocence away from our students and teach them how to look at character, not skin. Thank you.
Kate and Greg Brown? Are Kate and Greg Brown here? No? Okay. We're going to go?
Yes.
I was a student in Yorktown schools for eleven years, beginning in 1960. My mother is a sixty-five-year resident of this town. She was the first person to sell a house as a real estate agent to a black person outside of the Junior Lake community. It was an unspoken rule that no real estate agent was to show a house outside of the poorest section of the town, but it was spoken between real estate agents and brokers. My mother was one of the founders of the Fair Housing Council of Northern Westchester. And I still see a problem here. I look around, I've been in and out of Yorktown schools over the last few years, and I look around, and I see a very white community here. And there's not much you can do as the Board of Education, but your black population in this town is 3.4%. So you do need some critical race theory teaching in this town. When I was here in 1970, I went to a social studies class, American History, and asked the teacher, "If we were going to be studying the Vietnam War that year," he said, "No, you're not going to be taught anything about the Vietnam War while you're a student in Yorktown High School." It was not in the curriculum. And yet, I and a lot of my fellow students were facing the draft, but we weren't supposed to get any critical theory about that. And I did notice my oldest friend in the world, his name is the bottom plaque on that stone out front, and several other people I know. So you should consider critical thinking when you're trying to educate your students, because it will have an impact on them. I have a lot to say, but I won't go on. I'll just stop right there.
Thank you. Maggie Brown? Is Maggie Brown here? No? Okay. Agnes Phillips? No? Ari Rumurthy?
Hi. My name is Harida Murthy, and I am a proud product of Yorktown Schools. I've been here my whole life. Alumni from 2013. And I've come back here to speak at this meeting because I really believe in our community and that we can do better. Thank you, Dr. Hatter. Thank you, Matt Slater, for your support of DEI in our classes. Last year, when students shared their experiences, I appreciated your forward thinking, and I appreciated you listening to their experiences. And I want to address some of what has been said today. We are not indoctrinating our students, and we are not depriving them of their innocence. We are invalidating everything that these students, I mean, these students were vulnerable, and these students trusted us with their traumatic experiences. When Dr. Hatter put out a survey, it revealed lots of trauma in our kids. And the And the remarks that have been said tonight are super invalidating, and they continue to further that trauma. And when we think about prioritizing hurt, when we think about prioritizing the hurt sentiments of people over the trauma that these students continue to face when we invalidate their experiences, that's just, that's terrible. So that's my first point. I also wanted to speak about the counselor that
Thirty seconds.
...that has come up in a video that many of you have seen. He's been a tireless advocate for our community. I've seen him in all of the council meetings that I've attended virtually, and we are so lucky to have him as a resource for our students. And we're so lucky, yeah, just so glad to be here for our students to confide in, and thank you.
Ari was our last speaker, so that concludes public comment. Ron, I don't know if there's anything you want to address, or if we're done for the night.
No, I just appreciate everyone coming out and thank you for sharing your perspectives. You can see that there are many perspectives in the room. Just wanted to clarify policy on social media, 91-50. It doesn't specify social media, but it's all interactions in general. I believe that was emailed on June 14, and then again July 7. So I just wanted to clarify that transparency piece.
All right. Then I am going to ask for a motion to go into executive session with no intent to return to public session for the matters of contractual negotiation. Yes?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.